Good morning. Council is at the fire station two with the quorum present. We're going to start this meeting off. Process for public input. If you're not able to attend in person, you may complete the citizen input form on the city's website by three thirty P M. The day before the meeting. All forms be forwarded to the city council prior to the start of the meeting. And for in-person comments, registration forms and instructions are available on site. Only agenda items, specific comments will be accepted. And we're going to start off with opening remarks and review of bills by city manager.
All right, city manager, Meritus.
Okay, there you go. It's like which one's speaking here?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Um, one thing that I'll just kick it off before we kind of get too deep into this is that, you know, staff keeps reminding me this is my last one, right? Um, we have been working for months to get to this place. And so, um, as staff has, um, kind of worked the last few weeks and we've been getting David caught up. Um, you know, we felt like it'd be, it would be good if we, if I could help lead this process for the next day or two. Um, we have some good news. We have some mixed news and we have some bad news. So we're gonna, we're gonna tell you all of it. And as we prepare for, uh, this upcoming, uh, few years, uh, let's go ahead and, um, uh, turn this on. All right. One other thing I want to say too is just a reminder. We're in this for two days, but we're still on a tight schedule. So the more questions you ask a fire chief, uh, the longer this thing will, uh, when he late. Police chief, the longer will be, okay? So, um, all right, well, let's play. All right. So, um, just a couple of things we're going to do today. Uh, we have our utility rate, um, update. So we're going to talk a little bit about that. There is some good news a little bit. I'll talk briefly about that, but there's also some things that we're concerned about. Um, we have our revenue estimates, uh, just realized that we are really, really early in the process. So when we tell you all that, um, you know, we, we have, uh, basically only preliminary information. Um, results for our compensation update, which y'all know we do that every year. And then each department is going to go through their list of, uh, their requests. One thing I, I want to say is that, uh, this is something a brainchild of council actually to do this, uh, to give you guys an idea. Even at this time, before the city manager even presents the proposed budget, what it is that departments are asking for, because you got all of us together collectively have to be in agreement on what those priorities are. Go talk about the five-year C I P. I think that is tomorrow. Um, and then, as y'all know, this year we launched a new process to, uh, to ask for grant applications from our strategic partners. So we're going to go through those. And then we're just going to do a recap, um, of our priorities and as well as the city council. I want to say this, the good news is that we have resources. Last year at this time, we were thinking that this year would be, uh, revenues would not be as strong as they are. Um, so we were a little bit worried about that. So we will have some additional resources, but it's not enough to do everything. So therefore, again, we got to prioritize. Economy is still strong. There are mixed signals, but D F W is still showing to be very robust compared to other, uh, parts of the country. Lot of reasons for that, but we're still benefiting from that. But we still need to be, uh, watchful as to what may be coming. And there's still big signals even from, uh, uh, from the economists that we watch. Property tax values much better than expected. So we'll talk a little bit about that. Sales taxes are still solid. And of course, that you may, uh, that should say May twenty-three bond election, uh, just a big yay on that. Some of the mixed news. So the water district, uh, the premium study, this is their second study, um, dealing with this issue may be better. What we're hearing, um, and a bunch of us were at the, uh, several of us were at the meeting, their last meeting. Half of the board spoke and all of them were in favor of an option that would really not change the premium. As y'all know, we pay nickel now and that nickel cost us about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year. So the options that at least roughly half the board, uh, seems to support would only change the premium somewhere between four and six to seven cents, not on top of the nickel. So really, after all that work, all they may have really done is find a way to defend the fact that there is a premium. Um, so that's, that could be good news for us. But as you're going to hear from, uh, Dan Jackson, our utility rate consultant this morning, they have dramatically changed what their rates will be over the next five to six years for everybody, members and customers. So that's a big shock to us. We knew it was going to jump eleven percent next year, but you're going to see some double-digit increases coming. Um, and that is new information at least to me. Sapphire Bay, uh, of course, construction is underway, but we're going to have to plan for another delay, uh, for the resort portion. And part of that, and when we say by other, is the landmine planning that we need to be talking about and we're going to that in just a minute. So the city's growing fast. Y'all know that. Um, lot of issues coming at us. Um, and what we need to be doing and thinking about is what happens next year, the year after. Um, this cannot be just a fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget. We have to think about the next couple of years. So you'll remember this chart from last year. Um, what essentially is that we planned to show was that we, the safer grant expires. We have a couple of those. So we're going to need to pick up that burden in twenty-four and in twenty-five. Um, so in twenty nineteen, we hired nine firefighters from Grant. So that's almost a million dollars a year. Actually, with raises, it is over a million dollars a year. Uh, that will be in twenty-four. And then next year, the twenty-twenty safer grant, uh, where we hired nine firefighters also comes due. And that will be, uh, uh, that will be almost a million dollars as well. In addition to that, we need to be thinking about longer term, uh, perhaps even another fire station down the road. Uh, Sapphire Bay, for example, um, you know, we were building the new fire station. Got to have a ladder truck, need a medic unit. So there's costs that we're going to have to pay for there. So we, we spent some time discussing this last year and, um, and preparing for it. And so what we came up with, uh, city at that time had several sources of funds that, uh, one was, uh, land acquisition. We had about one point two million dollars. Plus, uh, we reallocated some ARPA funds. So in essence, we set aside nearly three million dollars, uh, two point seven, if I remember right. So two point seven million dollars. None of which has been spent. We still have the funds set aside. And, uh, those funds are being used, going back to that slide, to help us with some of the extraordinary costs that we knew we would be facing. Uh, the exploration of the first fire safer grant and then next year, the exploration of the next safer grant. So it's important to realize that we are mitigating, uh, that cost all the while that we believe additional revenue would be coming. If Sapphire Bay, the resort part, if the resort part is delayed and we, we're confident now, uh, maybe one to two years based on the discussions that we're having. We need to be prepared for that. And right now we're not in twenty-six and twenty-seven. Uh, we're, we'll be fine for twenty-four. Not only, um, our, some of our planning perspective, but we also are prepared. Um, you know, we already have money set aside for that, over a million dollars. And then at twenty-five, obviously we still have some funds available, uh, in that year as well. But even for twenty-five, I don't believe we have enough because the revenues that you're looking at there on the sales taxes, the, um, the, well, it doesn't show the hundred and twenty thousand. Can y'all see that in twenty-five Sapphire Bay city sales tax? I think, I don't think we can count on that. Remember from the time they start the resort is two years from that point before the doors open. And then they start having conventions and, and other, uh, activities going on. So I think it's pretty clear that there is at least one year delay. But I think what you have to plan for is at least two years delayed. If we're not planning for that, we're not going to be prepared for it. So why am I telling you this? Well, first and foremost, we have thirty-two new positions that have been requested. Not going to fill all of. Even if the landmine planning was not an issue, you still were not going to have enough money to fill all those positions. Sales taxes are still solid. Property taxes are much higher than what we thought they would be last year. Even, even with the restrictions we have, that's going to help us fund the, the new, um, uh, the bonds that we just, uh, that we just had the election on in Maine. But that still does not mean that there aren't challenges coming. And if we, if we close our eyes and we, and we just, and we spend everything and spend everything and spend everything, when you get to twenty-five, you're gonna, you're gonna struggle. Twenty-five, you may not have any money for people. You may only have money for raises, for example. Or you have to abandon raises that year to hire more people. So all of this comes to play and we have to consider all of it. So when the executive team met, they knew this and we had a conversation about prioritizing. You're going to have perhaps some different priorities or you're going to want to reorder some of that. You cannot do this without thinking about next year and the year after. So you remember this chart? Um, this was again last year's chart. We are updating it, um, you know, for the next couple of years. But you can see that by twenty-five, if we had done no landmine planning, we would have to increase the tax rate by almost four cents. Or we would have to go and ask the public in an, an election, uh, to be able to do that. Um, but because of the landmine planning, um, we were going to be able to get over that hump. And that was the whole purpose of that landmine planning was to be able to set aside some funds from one-time dollars that we had. Even though these are ongoing revenue, or excuse me, ongoing costs, just to get over that and smooth that hump out. But if we're not planning to shift twelve to twenty-four months, uh, we're going to make some short-sighted decisions this year. Uh, and this, I believe, is the most significant planning challenge that you've had for this year. We talked about it last year. Um, I will say this as well. Uh, we were also a little worried about, um, fiscal year twenty-five's property tax revenue. I think it's pretty certain that we're still going to see an increase in twenty-five. Because even if a recession was to start nationwide, by the time it gets down to the D F W market, remember that fiscal year twenty-five property tax values are going to be based on January one. So in just what six, seven months. And so because of that, you're going to see property values still pretty high next year. Plus, if you remember, you know, every year that you're reassessed, they can only go up ten percent in a year. So my home, it would have been reassessed thirty-three percent, um, last year. And again, this May, which means that that ten percent a year will have to work through the process for a couple of years before property value may, uh, may start declining. If they soften in this market, and that's not a certainty yet. It would take a pretty, pretty stiff recession, I think, for D F W to be effective at the same level. Too many things are going on here. So I just, you know, at the very beginning of this conversation, we have a lot of good news and there are things you're going to be able to do. But one thing that staff, uh, has discussed is that this year, for example, in twenty-three, fiscal year twenty-three, we're thinking we're going to have a pretty hefty surplus, maybe, maybe a million dollars or more. What you're going to hear staff recommend is that we do not spend that this year and that we carry it and add it to the landmine planning. Does that make sense? Anytime we have excess funds, we need to be thinking about the landmine planning first before we do anything else. Until we start to see steel go up down Sapphire Bay. Now, other things are going to get built down there in the meantime, and we will benefit from that. But it is the resort that's going to cause the activity that's going to cause the bulk of the revenues to come through. Makes sense? All right. So today, listen, remember, you're not making concrete decisions. So, um, particularly a couple of y'all that are new, just, just to go through the process a little bit. What we are interested in and hearing is your feedback. Ultimately, the city managers, budget, proposed budget, you're going to get to see in July and then you're going to have hearings on it and some other activity. So what we want to do is hear your feedback. If there's consensus, that helps. But otherwise, at least give us feedback on what their utility rates on other, our revenue estimates, um, some of the things you're going to hear from the department heads. So we could take all that consideration and preparing the proposed budget for next year. All right?
Uh, thank you. I have a question on, on the landmine.
Okay.
Um, so we, we just went through, um, the mid-year budget allocation. Um, I think given the news you just shared about our landmine planning and, and how we have, you know, we're going into F Y twenty-five with a potential deficit and then certainly twenty-six and twenty-seven with a deficit. Um, I, I think that would have been very helpful to have going into the mid-year budget planning. And I think now this changes kind of everything. Um, and specifically that funding allocation that we did in the mid-year budget. Um, I, I think we are going to have to open that back up for further conversation on strategy with the mid-year allocations and probably reel back some stuff. Um, because that was not, this, this was not an understanding at the time that, that we would be having deficits going this fur- much further out. Um, and that we didn't have the information that what we've already allocated was not enough. Um, and so we spent money not having that information. I think if we had that information, we would not have spent as much money as we, as we've had. So I think, um, if that's a possibility, that's something I would, um, I would propose, um, as an alternative, um, than to reaching into recurring, um, general fund dollars and instead use one-time dollars to help, uh, bridge the gap, um, if that makes sense.
Mayor, Mayor, it does. And honestly, I think that would be really smart. Um, I will say this, that in part, um, the, the, the discussions we've had on surplus, uh, resources, um, kind of crossed over, uh, the plan for is what we're seeing from Sapphire Bay. And part of that are all these ongoing conversations that we're having, particularly with the undergrounding of Encore's utilities, electric, and how long that conversation is take and then how long they're telling us it will take before they finish that work. So, um, I think that's, that would be a really smart thing to do. And it may not be that we dial it all back, but I think if we look at it, maybe there are some other decision points that need to be made.
How much money did we allocate as part of the mid-year? How much money was that?
It was about, well, there's a twenty-three degree.
And how much do you think roughly has been spent to this point?
I can look. I've kept track. What I can is at least over fifty thousand goes to council. If it's under fifty, I don't see a staff at work. So I'll have to check our departments and see if they've actually received with it.
I would hazard a guess that not much, uh, between them.
I, I think, um, we're going to have to have that conversation in a future work session about, um, pulling some of that money back. It is one-time cost. I'd so much rather use one-time cost to bridge a landmine than to use reoccurring costs that dips into, uh, you know, think we're unable to do as many positions as we need or do as many, uh, do as much of a raise as we need to do, uh, things that are going to take reoccurring revenue to use. I'd, I'd rather spend one-time on a one-time issue than reoccurring on a one-time issue.
I, I think that's, that's really smart, Mayor.
Chart we have here was just updated for twenty-four, not for any, any delays in revenues from Sapphire.
This has not, this is still last year's chart. We are going to be updating that for you guys, um, when we get, um, to this. Twenty-four probably will not change that much. One thing that has changed, if, if you remember in the chart that the nine firefighters was about eight hundred ninety-one thousand. It's now over a million dollars because of raises and some other things. I mean, you got to remember that was two years ago when we first started that, those, uh, that analysis. Um, and so that will also follow through with the rest of the calculations and we haven't done any of those numbers.
Well, I think it would be helpful from a planning perspective to have both a one-year and two-year projection based on a delay on the Sapphire Bay revenues. We know pretty much where our expenses are, but see both those scenarios. It sounds like we're likely to fall somewhere in that range. That would give us a handle on what we're trying to find then in terms of the, the, the makeup money that we need. Um, based on this, you said we had put aside about two point seven. So last year we had about a two point three gap, it looks like.
No, in twenty-three, there was no gap. The gap starts in twenty-four.
I, I meant the, the gap we were trying to fill over the, the, the planning horizon.
Yeah. So it was really, uh, would have helped us get over that hump and smoothed out that, uh, that tax rate in twenty-four and twenty-five. Um, it's still going to be a little bit more than what we had, uh, initially planned for. But, uh, but without it, you see what the tax rate would have had to change.
Well, technically you're, you're suggesting that the hump has now gone from, uh, being at twenty-five to now being twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-seven.
Yeah. So, so you see the red there, right?
Yes. No, I, I see the, the yellow line and basically that is not a hump anymore. It's a hill.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. Yes.
And, and that, that is the story here, um, is that our projections for the landmine has extended by two years.
For planning purposes. Maybe we get lucky, but if we don't plan for it, it'll catch us by surprise.
But I, I would just caution using reoccurring revenue and strapping that down on a one-time issue because that's what this is.
So I, and, and I, I'll, I'll just say this, my, my, from my perspective. If we can set aside more one-time dollars to help us get over that hump, then I think your, your proposal is, is okay.
How much are we talking about that we need to get us over this extended?
Forty million dollars.
Yeah.
Perspective for, for this year, we had anticipated one point eight.
Right.
Have we done everything on the list, given inflation, um, equipment needs for fire, um, the four police officers that we had anticipated on the list, um, those adding those safer firefighters, we would have actually spent two point five of the two point seven, wiped out almost the entire landmine just this new year twenty-four.
Oh, the heck.
But you'll see. Well, here's one thing. I mean, the safer, the safer, uh, the not safer firefighters, we anticipated, didn't realize we were going to give a nine percent raise last year, right, for fire for public safety. So that number was based on, at the time we had the discussions, not knowing what that, that ninety percent raise was going to go through. And I believe it was like eight hundred something thousand dollars. That number today is one point one three four million dollars is what's actually going into the budget.
So.
So and then next year we have to add another nine firefighters. Well, if you, if you're going to give raises this year, that one point one is going to go up again by whatever percentage we're going to give raises this year.
So what are we talking about here? Three million dollars?
Well, next year is probably going to be the next highest number because we've got nine more safer firefighters. I would say next year might be pretty much equivalent to this year, probably a little bit more.
So three.
Yeah. And then it's going to start.
We don't have three. What the heck do we do?
Then it'll start to taper off a little bit because we won't have nine safer firefighters coming in from years three and four. But it's still.
Well, but, but that hill still exists until the resort is built.
But let me say this, though. You may not be able to mitigate a hundred percent. But we believe you'll have at least a million dollar surplus this year. So now you've already got a third of the way. Plus, we could revisit.
Okay, wait, wait, wait. Hold on. We're talking about a million dollar surplus this year. Right. So basically that means the seven million dollars in requests, we cannot consider. We, nobody gets anything new. We're basically keeping things the same. That doesn't work. That does not work. So we're going to have to think about something. We're going to have to be a little bit more creative than that.
If, um, if the, if the whole Sapphire Bay development process extends out to some, do we still have the same level of urgency in bringing in the public safety positions now that we did before? Because our planning before
Too late.
was that we were going to be populating the place in twenty-five. And last year during the budget process, we were talking about adding an additional set of, of, I believe, both firefighters and police in order to deal with the opening. So.
But it's already, it's already occupied.
Yes, we have the safer grants. We have that. But again, if, if we look at where we are now, do we need to have the same expansion level plan for the next year?
Oh, yeah, I agree with you. Same. Yeah, that's a good question.
Talked about last year. It seems to me the answer is no. We're not going to have twenty-three thousand people on that peninsula every day, beginning in twenty-five or twenty-six, like we had thought. So the, the level of need, now we have a fire station under construction that we'll want to staff, just no other reason to hell.
But that's already been, yeah.
Got staff for that. That's the safer grant. So it, it's, it's not just a revenue gap issue. There's also a, an expense planning issue here to look at. If this, if this truly believe is delayed, then we need to spread our expenses out along with that delay.
So, so to your point, we've already ordered the ladder truck, which we absolutely think we need, whether the resort starts now or not. Okay? You already have the staff in place because of the safer grant to run that. But maybe what you do is maybe we put the medic out a year or the pumper station another year. And we'll have to hear from the fire chief and see how he feels about that. But I think that's what you're proposing is that instead of twenty-four, maybe that becomes twenty-five or even twenty-six.
And, and just my, my mental two cents. I've heard you say need. I've heard you say need, uh, in, in light of the forecast we have. I think we have to consider everything in the category of needs and wants. You know, if it is an absolute need, we need to, we need to carefully consider it. If it's a want, it has to be pushed out.
So, but this, I, I'm going to circle back to reoccurring versus one time. Because that's, I think we need to get this correct in our mindset before we move forward today, um, if possible. But I, I seriously have a problem allocating the reoccurring to this landmine planning, basically wiping out any ability to pay for additional needs, um, that have been requested, uh, for this year. And I think we need to go ahead and put back on the table the mid-year budget allocations and say that whole plan, that plan of allocations has changed with this information. Uh, I think with this information, this is where we pull that back and say, this is where that needs to go. That way we're not dipping into, um, the reoccurring costs. And then even that said, we still have the problem of that's only about two something million dollars. And this is a three million dollar need in one year.
Um.
Yeah.
But look at it as far as the items from the major budget amendment that have gone to council and been approved. And we have already allocated about two point three million out of three point three million. So there's about, um, a million left of that major budget.
That we know about. I mean, if there's small amounts that didn't go to council, we haven't seen those items, so.
Did clear, sorry, can you clarify for me? When you say allocated, that encumbered with P Ls or other things or just allocated via council action?
Gone to council to award contract or create purchase. Two point four million has gone to council in cover. I think it's no one.
And now whether we actually awarded the contract, we might have taken that step forward, but at least it's gone to council and they've got the approval to do that. So.
And did any of that funding include the Miller Road Bridge design? Or is that separate? Okay. So that's off the table. Thank you.
We wouldn't use bond money for this.
Right.
So, so you could, if you, if you dial it all back, there were a million there. Plus, there was a million dollar surplus this year. So in, in this year, you have two million dollars towards your three million dollar hump. And that still gives you a little bit of time next year.
Should we ask department heads to freeze the progress on that mid-year allocation? Assess what's been actually committed and what has not so that we know that.
What, what construction has started, what is not, and what the things that have not, I think we have to consider pulling that back.
Well, listen.
Right. Um.
But we'll work on that, Mayor. But I think, I think what we, the conversation we're having is one that was absolutely critical. Um, is, is just so that y'all understand, uh, that chart's about to change in a dramatic way. Um, it doesn't mean that we can't do some of the, some of the priorities this year, but it does mean that it's going to be extremely difficult, uh, to, to, in a, in a vacuum, to make decisions when we know what's staring at us, you know, even in two or three years.
Well, we're talking about a budget deficit. That's what we're doing. This is very serious. This is, we're talking about going into budget deficits. We don't do that.
Or no, or that's when you also go to the public and say.
Yeah, that's not, that's not a question.
Well, it may be, Mayor. What, I mean, you may be able to mitigate some of this. You may not be able to mitigate all of it.
We've already asked the public to pay for sixty-something million dollars in facility. We've already asked the public to pay for sixty something million dollars in facilities. We're not about to go and ask them for a rate increase because we budgeted incorrectly. And put too many eggs in one basket. That that won't fly. So we're going to have to be very creative here. But this is a very this is this is not what I expected this morning. This is very frustrating. We should have been more prepared and understood this before we went into midyear budget planning. This should have been very clearly communicated to us.
So mayor, we did have a conversation about the landline planning when we were doing the midyear uh budget allocation.
That message wasn't received.
And 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 you're right about that. And that I think part of it is some, maybe you would call it new information. But I think the realization that the the electrical undergrounding and the delays that we're seeing there, I think we have got to plan for two more years. Maybe it'll be better, but if we don't plan for it, uh we already know what the answer will be.
Is there opportunity to step our building plans out six months or a year in delay in that way?
You're talking about the the new public. Okay, but remember those are out of bond funds.
Right.
So that's not.
It's but taxes are taxes when you're paying them.
But you've already kind of going to do that because we're only going to issue so many.
Right, right. But we're talking about a gap gap in fiscal year twenty five that gets bigger, right, from the landmines landing? Which was where the next big chunk for the twenty three bond was going to hit. That's where about that six cents of that was going to hit.
But Brian, the 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 issue is is the the difference between the I N S rate and the O and M rate. So even if you were to hold back the I N S rate, you're not guaranteed that you could put it in the O and M without a vote anyway. Because you're limited to the three and a half percent.
I'd rather have a vote about shifting funds and increasing taxes. So we got some planning to do before we get to that, but it's something to keep on our back burner. So whether we can defer some of that tax increase for the 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 new facilities, if we have to do the tax increase to cover an operational gap in the near term.
But once you issue a referendum on a tax rate increase, that's in perpetuity. There's no guarantee that that's going to go away after a short amount of time. So if you if you.
Tax increases on the.
On the M M M N O.
Yes, based on the revenue, though, not based on the rate. Right, so revenue growth.
Right.
For your caused by that. So you still have an opportunity to drop the rate. You're not locked into a tax increase forever. We dropped it six.
So.
So if we have future revenues, then that chart shows you that let's say you did no landline planning and the public was willing to increase the tax rate for a couple of years, you could see how the tax rate was going to come back down.
So lot to think about. This is uh puts a damper on the day. Um, but let's go ahead and move on with the utility. Actually, it was public input. Um, is there anything else, Brian?
Yes.
All right. All right, uh, we're now moving on to public input. Does anybody wish to speak? Okay, she raised. I saw her first. Diane Moore, uh, go ahead.
So Diane Moore, Chair of the Rallett Community Information Commission. I just wanted to let council staff know that I will be here throughout open sessions. I'm excited to listen to the discussion today and I'm happy to answer any questions or concerns related to requests from our commission or related to our community missions.
Thank you for being here. Yes.
Hey, I'm De. Hi, I'm Violet. And I just want just from listening to what's going, what's going to be going on, thirty two positions and we're going to have a deficit. I don't think we should be considering any frivolous positions for the we need to consider what we need, not what we want. Public safety comes first. The cheese comes first. Public works. I mean, we got to have this. We got to take care of our city. And bring on a just bring in a real current position just because someone wants it. No. And I will convey it to the other people that has conveyed it to me. They do not want it. So that's just where I feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, we'll now move on to the utility rate study.
I'm going to do a quick introduction. Um, good morning, council. I want to introduce Dan Jackson from Willdan. He has been doing the city's utility rate study for several years. Um, Wilson Sackman, dear Willdan, has been performing this annual um rate consultant um study, and I think it's critical and vital to our utility fund. What this does is he looks at the um economic factors. Uh, the North Texas Municipal Water District rates, he's got some inside information that he builds into our rate study each year so that we can smooth out any type of rate impact that we're going to have to our customers and we're not surprised by anything um from one year to the next. So um gonna have Dan start with his um water and wastewater rate update. It's always exciting to hear the news from him, not so much maybe today since he got some recent news from the water district, but um overall, I think it sounds like it's going to be good for us for fiscal year twenty four, but he's got some updated information for twenty five further.
Thank you very much. Uh, it's very rare that the words exciting and water rates go together, but um but I think today, uh, actually, uh, we do have some uh interesting updates that we'd like to go over with you all. Uh, that's again, I appreciate the chance to be here for before you all today. I've got my colleague Dan Lanning with me as well. Um, this is our fifteenth year of service for the city of Rallett. We really appreciate all the confidence you all have shown in us uh over the years. But it's very important for cities like Rallett that are in a a growth mode at uh here in the Dallas-Fort Worth area to continually stay on top of water and wastewater rates. You have a very sound water and wastewater utility fund right now. It's well managed. Uh, you've got um uh, you know, you're meeting all of your expenses. You've got a healthy fund balance. But these kind of fund balances can turn unhealthy very, very quickly if you don't stay on top of the changes that are happening in the industry. So what I'd like to do for you today uh in this hopefully relatively brief presentation is I'd like to talk with you about what has happened since we did our last presentation last year. Then I'll update you on your revenues, your expenses and your accounts. And then we'll present to you our revised recommendations for the year going forward. Is this how I work this? Or I use this thing? Okay, um, I'd like to start out just by giving you a little bit of background information about what's happened in the last twelve months. Account growth has been actually a little bit higher than what we forecast last year. When we forecast water and wastewater rates, uh, we base a lot of it on account growth, and we tend to be very, very conservative in forecasting future accounts. Because I've never liked to present rate plans that are based on accounts that don't currently exist. So what I like to do is I like to be as conservative as possible, and I'd rather aim low and hit high. But what's happened is you've actually, even though the economy uh has struggled nationally, uh as Brian indicated earlier, the D F W economy is still doing pretty well. And you have actually managed to exceed the growth expectations that we put into our last study. You also had a real spike in your water usage in the summer of twenty twenty two. I think we all remember how hot it was last summer. And we saw this with uh, we do work for a lot of other cities in the D F W area and all of them saw a spike in usage. We think it's going to kind of normalize this year, so you're going to see a slight decrease in your usage this year. Uh, North Texas Municipal Water District is continuing to adjust to implement very significant increases. As we're about to show you, they've just released their latest rate forecast. And bottom line is they're anticipating ten to fifteen percent annual increases each year through twenty twenty eight. Well, you've got no choice but to pass those increases through to your ultimate rate payers. And so when they increase rates, it means that it's going to put a strain on your fund as well. Okay, um, one of the common questions people ask is how do our rates compare to uh other cities in the D F W area? This chart right here seeks to answer that question. The average residential rate payer here in the city uses about seventy five hundred gallons of water and wastewater service a month. That's an average. Obviously, there are some people use more than that, some people use less than that. But what we're but we what we do in this chart, and we tend to show this chart every year, is we show what you pay here in Rallett for seventy five hundred gallons as compared to what many of your neighbors pay. As you can see from this chart, you're right about in the middle of the pack. Customer here in Rallett pays a hundred and twenty two dollars and forty six cents for seventy five hundred gallons of water and sewer service. Now, that doesn't include garbage or taxes or anything like that. It's just basic water and wastewater service. You're right at the average for the area. I mean, you're higher than some, you're lower than others. In other words, you're right about where you would expect to be. You are certainly not out of proportion to what people pay for water and sewer service here in the D F W area. So your rates compare very favorably to most of your um, most of your neighbors. Okay, same things on the commercial side. Um, there are some cities, won't name them specifically, that have very low residential rates and make up for it with much higher commercial rates. You all are in the middle of the pack with both residential and commercial, so you treat both of your customer bases, I think, very equitably. Thanks. Of course, um, every year we for we update our comprehensive water and wastewater rate model. This rate model is the model that we've used for the city in the in all fifteen years that we've worked here. It's a model that has been used for cities all over the United States and in five foreign nations. And what this model does is it forecasts every expense for the next ten years based on a series of accelerators. One of the prime accelerators is how much growth do you anticipate there being uh over the next years? That's a that's a prime factor in any long term forecast. And remember one thing about forecast. A forecast is not a guarantee. It's a prediction based on a series of reasonable assumptions. And as you can see here, we're assuming that you're going to continue to grow at a fairly healthy rate, about two and a half percent a year, which translates to about six to seven hundred new accounts per year. As I said earlier, you're actually exceeding expectations a little bit from what uh from what we forecast in the last study, but you're still on target to reach about twenty nine thousand water accounts within the next couple of years. Now, predicting water usage is a little bit more of a roll of the dice because weather factors come into great consideration. This chart right here tracks what your actual usage has been compared to what we forecast last year, and then we project uh moving forward. Look what happened in twenty twenty two. We forecast a typical year. Well, it didn't turn out to be typical, did it? Turned out to be very, very hot, and so usage spiked. Now, we're predicting that usage is going to come down a little bit this year. It might come down a little bit more than that because so far we've had a very, very temperate spring. We had a very mild spring. You know, water is a funny business. You're in the business of producing a product. Water is a product, just like a gallon of gasoline or a McDonald's hamburger or anything like that. You're producing a product that you really want your customers not to buy. Because it's good for the uh community, it's good for the environment when people don't use a lot of water, not particularly good for the water fund. But so you have to balance, you know, the desire to keep people using water at a uh, in in a responsible manner with the need to accumulate revenue. And also you have to take into consideration weather items. Uh, there are going to be years where your fund grows a little bit more than anticipated because your revenues are higher because it was so dry. You generally make up for that in wet years. In wet years, your revenues are going to be a little bit below expectations. So it is a game of prediction, and all we have to do is predict what the weather is going to be. If you could tell me how much it's going to rain next year, I could tell you exactly how much water you're going to sell. Now, one of the um goals that the city of Rallett has put into place over the last decade or last twenty years, actually, is to try to get people to conserve water usage. We want people to use water responsibly. When I first started working for the city about ten, fifteen years ago, this chart shows that the average residential customer used about ten thousand seventy nine gallons of water a month. This chart right here shows how much the average residential customer uses each year over the last decade. Look how it's trended downwards in the last twelve years. Now, the average is six thousand nine hundred and forty three gallons. See how it ticked up a little bit last year in twenty twenty two when it was hotter? But you've had a very, very encouraging trend here. The average customer has decreased their water usage by thirty percent in the last decade. And I think that's a very, very good thing. You know, there's only so much water in the world. I mean, we have six billion people on the planet today. We had one billion people a hundred years ago, but we got the exact same amount of fresh water. What that means is that people have to be more responsible in their water usage. The city has put into place many policies, including implementing a conservation rate structure that has been meant to encourage conservation, and it has been very, very successful over the last decade. People can get water when they need it, but people are here in Rallett are not using water excessively. And as a matter of fact, again, we we work for we work for cities like Plano, McKinney, Richardson, Frisco, all them. You've got one of the lowest per gallon usages in the area. So I think that is very responsible on the part of the city. Okay, we've talked about usage. Let's talk a little bit about your expenses. Once again, what are some of the assumptions that we use um in doing our latest forecast? Well, we're uh we're assuming that most of your expenses are going to increase by five to seven percent a year. We actually got some very good news about a half an hour ago. I was looking on my phone. The latest inflation forecast came out. Inflation's down to four percent now. It had been at seven to eight percent over the last year. It had been starting to trend downwards, but that's very encouraging. Because we're still anticipating that inflation is going to be a little bit higher than historical levels, but the good news is it has actually come uh come down. The city has long had a longstanding policy of issuing about seven million dollars in bonds annually to fund capital improvements and system repairs. Now, we do a lot of work for cities that have incredibly low rates. But we have low but they have low rates because they're not putting any money into their system. The well managed water utility has to balance the desire to keep rates low with the need to invest in your system to ensure that you will maintain a a level of service that it's that is acceptable to your rate payers. I think the city's done a great job at doing that. You've been parcelling out water debt service about seven million dollars a year. And as you're about, as we're about to see, good due to good financial management, it is the effect on your rate payers has been very minimal. But it has also given you a lot of revenue and a lot of cash that you've been able to use to fund system improvements and repairs. Water systems are like anything else. They wear out over time. And if you don't continue to put money into it, this level of service is going to is going to drop rather dramatically. By the same token, your pay go increases are are continue. We're continuing to assume that you increase it by ten percent annually. And then you do a reserve contribution of about one million dollars a year. But there are the the biggest thing that's driving the bus in this rate plan is going to be the the impact of North Texas Municipal Water District increases and to a lesser extent, City of Garland increases. That's what really is driving the rate plan. Let me show you how it drives the rate plan. These this right here shows your operating expenses for your water system and your wastewater system. Your water system is expected to incur fifteen point seven million dollars in operating expenses in the coming year. Uh, according to your preliminary budget, and the wastewater system, about seven point six million. But as you can see from this uh pie chart, seventy seven percent of your operating expenses are North Texas Municipal Water District pass-throughs, nothing more than a pass-through. And by the same token, sixty eight percent of your wastewater expenses are City of Garland pass-throughs. So either there are always going to be people out there that say, you know, if we just ran our system more efficiently or we manage things more efficiently or we had less employees, then we wouldn't have to do rate increases. Well, unfortunately, the arithmetic doesn't quite work that way, does it? When three quarters seventy five cents of every dollar you spend on operating expenses goes to North Texas. Speaking of which, North Texas has recently announced in the last few weeks, they have they have um they have released their latest forecast of what they believe their rate increases will be over the next ten years. They do this about every two years. And three weeks ago, they released their latest forecast. It came as quite a shock to a lot of us. This right this chart right here is their latest forecast. As you can see, they are now they implemented a thirteen percent rate increase last year in fiscal year twenty twenty three. They're going to implement an eleven percent rate increase in twenty twenty four, and they're expecting double digit rate increases for each of the next four years. Followed by four to five percent rate increases in the years after that. What is it? This chart right here compares what they thought the rate was going to be last year to what they're now saying the rate is going to be. Right now, the city of Rallett pays three dollars and forty four cents per thousand gallons for the water that you purchase from North Texas. Last year, they projected that that rate would increase to five dollars and five cents by twenty twenty eight. They're now saying that rate is going to increase to six dollars and six cents by twenty twenty eight. That's twenty five percent more than what they anticipated just last year. By twenty thirty two, they are now projecting that the unit rate per thousand gallons is going to be seven dollars and twenty nine cents from North Texas as opposed to six dollars and forty cents, which is what they projected last year. Now, this is a rate they're charging everybody, all of their uh, all of their customer cities. They also charge a member city rate, which as Brian indicated earlier, is five cents less than what the customer city rate is. But this is had a very significant impact on all of the cities in the Collin Denton County corridor. So while we're going to be recommending continued rate adjustments. So while we're going to be recommending continued rate adjustments here for the city of Rowlett, all of your neighbors are going to be increasing their rates too, because they all have to absorb these increases. Because the pie chart that I showed you for Rowlett is the same pie chart that McKinney sees, that Plano sees, that Frisco sees, that Mesquite, Garland, all of them see. So these rate increases are impacting everybody. Now, on slightly gooder news, gooder, on slightly better news, slightly better news, Garland's rate increases appear to be much more moderate. They're looking at about five to six percent per year. So while that is still going to have to be incorporated in wastewater rate adjustments, the increases are at least a little bit more manageable. Now, remember when I said earlier, we were talking about seven million dollar annual bond issues that the city is going to continue to implement in order to fund its long-term capital improvement program? Usually, when a city embarks on issuing twenty-eight to thirty-five million dollars in debt over five years, it's going to result in fairly significant rate increases. That's not the case for the city of Rowlett, and I think that this is primarily due to sound financial management. This chart right here shows your current debt, which is the blue portion of the bar chart, and your anticipated new debt, which is the red portion of the bar chart. As you can see, the amount barely changes over the five years. That's because you are retiring debt from the water utility fund over the next five years, and you're replacing it with new debt. What this is allowing you to do is it's allowing you to make thirty to thirty-five million dollars of investment in your water and sewer system at virtually no co- additional cost to your ratepayers. It's just costing in the same amount that it has been in the past. And once again, that's why it's important to do these kind of long-term financial plans. Because that way you can time your new debt with the retirement of your existing debt to minimize the impact on your ratepayers. So that is at least some good news, but this chart right here shows that your overall, your costs are going to continue to increase. This chart right here is your water and wastewater utility forecast cost of service over the next ten years. Um, as you can see, the bar chart is made up of several components. The most important component is the blue portion, and that's the North Texas and the Garland Water Utilities costs. You see how over the ten-year period, the blue portion gets to be a much bigger percentage of your total costs? And while your total cost of running your water and sewer system is anticipated to increase, it's basically being driven by the North Texas and the, and to a lesser extent, the Garland increases. In the current year, it's going to cost you just a little bit less than forty million dollars to run your water and sewer system. But by twenty thirty-two or by twenty thirty-three, it's going to cost you about sixty million dollars. So what does this mean in terms of the our long-term rate plan? Well, as you may recall, every year we present to you a rate plan for the current year with a forecast for your rates over the next four to five years. The good news is is that the rate plan that we're presenting to you today is the same rate plan that we projected last year at this time. And we also anticipate that next year in twenty twenty-four, that rate adjustment will be the same one that we projected last year as well. What that means is that uh the rate plan on the water side calls for no change in the residential base rate. Remember, you change, you, the residential customers pay a base charge, and then they pay a rate per thousand gallons. We're recommending no change at all in the base rate. We are recommending a six percent annual rate, base rate adjustment for meters that are three inches or greater. The reason is that the city of Rowlett decided a few years ago that they would embark on a new strategy to charge rates, bit of base charges based on what's known as meter equivalencies. A, for example, a two-inch meter is the equivalent of about four to five, five-eighth inch meters. Five-eighth inch meter is your basic residential meter, a two-inch meter but puts about four to five times the amount of water through. So what most cities do, what many cities do, is they charge a base rate that's four to five times more for a two-inch meter than it is for a five-eighth inch meter, because capacity is so much greater. And so the city of Rowlett had not been doing that in the past. They didn't want to implement it overnight because that would result in a massive increase in the two-inch base charge. So you decided to phase it in over a number of years, and this rate plan continues that in the year two thousand and four. We, uh, two thousand twenty-four. We're also anti, we're also recommending that you do your six percent adjustment in the volume right, uh, in the volumetric rate for this coming year. So the rate plan that we're recommending for water is the same as what we projected last year. Um, unfortunately, due to higher more than North Texas charges, we think that beyond twenty twenty-six, you're going to need higher rate increases than what we anticipated. We were hoping that the rate adjustments would be nominal in twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, and twenty twenty-eight. Because North Texas was telling us that they were only going to do small rate increases. Now that they said, oh, never mind, we're going to do double-digit increases for those years, you're probably going to need higher increases in twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, and twenty twenty-eight. But the good news is that for fiscal year twenty-four and fiscal year twenty-five, we're still on target with the plan that was last year. Same thing's true with on the wastewater side. We recommend no change from the prior year's rate plan, which called for a two percent annual adjustment in twenty twenty-four and a two percent adjustment in twenty twenty-five with three percent adjustments in twenty twenty-six through twenty twenty-eight. So I'm now going to show you the rates themselves, then I'll show you the more important chart, which is the impact on your average residential rate payer. This is the water rate plan. As you can see, on the residential side, there's no change at all in the base charge of twenty-two dollars in October of twenty twenty-three. We're forecasting no change in October of twenty twenty-four, but we are forecasting increases of about two dollars in twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, and twenty twenty-seven. The volumetric rate goes up by six percent in twenty twenty-three and six percent in twenty twenty-four, and a lesser amount in twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-seven. Uh, multifamily rate, you know, continues to track the residential rate. And the non-residential fee, as you can see, the larger meters get larger in in twenty twenty-four, uh, in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, and then you have standard increases in twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-seven. On wastewater side, basically a two percent increase in the base charge and the volumetric charge in twenty twenty, in October of twenty twenty-three, a two percent adjustment in October of twenty twenty-four, and then similar adjustments in twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-seven. Now, what does this mean in terms of what people pay? Most people don't really care that much about the unit rate, what they really care is, what is, how does it impact our our monthly bills? Well, remember how I told you that the average rate payer here in the city of Rowlett uses about seven thousand to seventy-five hundred gallons of water a month? Under that, uh, that user who uses seventy-five hundred gallons of water and wastewater right now pays a hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty-six cents for that service. Under this plan, their bill would go up by three dollars and fifty-six cents a month. It would go to a hundred and twenty-six dollars and two cents. Obviously, if you use less water, your increase would be a little bit less than that. It would go up by a similar amount in twenty twenty-four. But unfortunately, due to the continued North Texas increases, in twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-seven, the increases are going to be slightly higher, because you're going to have to start increasing that base charge, and then you're going to have to continue to increase the volumetric rate to meet the double-digit North Texas rate increases. Um, commercial and multifamily units have the same or similar increases. Now, I hate to take rate plans that are this complicated with all these numbers and all these assumptions and try to summarize it in terms of one or two numbers. I don't like to do that, but if I did, I would tell you that for the vast majority of ratepayers, you are looking at a two to three dollar a month increase each year for the next couple of years, with slightly higher increases in the years beyond that. This rate plan will keep you financially healthy, as shown by this chart right here. It shows that your fund balance will continue to be um at a healthy level, which um which will give you a hundred and sixty to a hundred and eighty days of uh operating fund balance, which is what your general goal has been. It also gives you a good contingency and reserve in case there are any um, you know, um, unexpected uh events. So just to summarize, um, it's always been very important to do these kind of long-term plans, because the thing about the water business is it's fairly easy to project in the future because people use water in very standard ways. The only, the only real wild card is the weather. But you tend to know years in advance when you're going to need to do repairs. You tend to know years in advance when your supplier is going to increase their rates. So what that does is that gives you the ability to implement a plan that minimizes rate adjustments by phasing adjustments in over a number of years. And also allows you to fund those uh those expenses and keep your fund balance healthy. And that's exactly what you've been doing over the last decade. However, we do recommend that you consider to, that you continue to do annual reviews. Not just because I so much enjoy being for you every year, but because of all the growth that you have and the high level of uncertainty about what North Texas's rate increases are going to be, I think it's important to continue to do these annual reviews. I do want to summarize by saying that, you know, North Texas has said they're going to do double-digit increases every year. They revise their projections every year. So far, every time they revise their projections, their, or their revisions have only gone one direction, and that's up. Maybe sometime in the future they'll do a revision and their their numbers will come down. I'm an optimist by nature, maybe that'll actually happen someday. But I, but I do think that you do need to continue to stay on top of those increases because when North Texas talks about a double-digit increase, that has a very significant impact on your fund balance and on your customers' rates. So with that, um, that really summarizes my prepared remarks, I'd be happy to answer any questions yet this time.
Can we get this presentation emailed to council? All right, thank you. Any questions? So in twenty twenty-four, one way or another, we will be signing a new contract with North Texas Municipal Water District. At present, I believe we are still under the table of pay provision of the existing contract, which means that we're paying for three point two billion gallons of water. I believe we used two point six billion last time I looked on an annual basis. Um, so we're paying about twenty, twenty-three percent more water than we're using. At some point, once we sign this contract, our volume, the volume we're paying for will more closely match the volume that we are using. Um, is that factored into the forecast for our six percent increases to meet the increases from North Texas, or are we basing this strictly on where our contract is today?
Remember, seven-year rolling way the litigation was solved for the settlement, there is a transition period, that long, eight-year and then five-year.
And it's still not clear whether
beyond this planning
Yeah, and it's still not clear whether that started in twenty twenty when the contract was agreed to by the members, whether that starts in twenty twenty-four when we sign a contract.
Exactly.
So can we clarify that at some point?
My guess is that it's outside your planning
It it's generally outside the planning period. It may be beneficial to the city to have a um, what's known as a rolling average. Um, because you haven't been paying, taking your take-or-pay amount. Now, you will hit your take-or-pay if you continue the amount of growth that you're having. So I think in the long run, the impact will not be really significant to the city. I think there is the potential for some savings there, um, if you sign the new contract. Because what it does is it it protects the city in case there is a very unusual weather, you know, period. Let's say we have another, y'all remember, I mean, I've lived in Dallas almost all my life, I remember nineteen eighty and I remember twenty eleven, when there were sixty straight days of hot weather and water usage skyrocketed. Under the current contract right now, whatever your highest amount is, you're tied to that forever. And so under a rolling average, what happens is uh, that high usage gets factored in to the other four years, and it tends to moderate it, and then it rolls off after five years. So the impact is less significant. But for growing cities like Rowlett, while you're not hitting your take-or-pay right now, you probably will at some point in the future. So the impact, while it will still be beneficial, will not be quite as dramatic as it would be if you were a mature city that didn't have any growth. The bottom line is that we haven't really taken that in in consideration in this plan because the real impact won't be felt for several years. But I still think it's a good idea to do it.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
I'd just like to say one last thing if I could. Like I said, it's been a privilege to work here for the last fifteen years, and for all fifteen years I've been working with Brian. I've had the chance to work for many, many cities in Texas, over a hundred cities and two hundred cities around the country. And there are very few city managers I've worked with that I've enjoyed working with more than Brian. Brian, I'm going to miss you, I I really, I wish you well in your retirement, and it won't be the same here without you. So thank you very much for these last fifteen years.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Can we get the clicker back? Okay, um, bear with me on this, um, we're going to get into the revenue estimates, refuse is not going to be very difficult, but once we get into the general fund revenue estimates, we start talking about property taxes, it's very intricate and complicated. So I've got my notes to get us through this so that I can get through in the thirty-minute time uh timeline that I'm allotted here. Um, stop me at any time if you have any questions, but I'm probably going to speak a little quick. Some of these screens you've seen from last year from explaining how the property tax rate calculation works, but there are some new council members. So I wanted to make sure that I hit some of those those points again this year. So we'll start off with the revenues fund. Um, the revenues fund is based off of a seven-year contract awarded to FCC Environmental Services that began on October first of twenty seventeen. The contract provides for a rate increase each year or decrease based on a calculation that's comprised of the CPI as reported by the U.S. Department of Labor, as well as the diesel fuel price index reported by the U.S. Department of Energy. Um, the annual rate adjustment cannot exceed five percent for any single year, that's what's built into that FCC contract. We calculate that each year, and you can see that um twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, the inflationary um calculation was above that uh five percent, so we were capped at the five percent rate increase. Um, it only went up about point one five percent in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, it actually went down because um the rates um went down. And then in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, again, we're seeing um capped. That twenty twenty-four, you can see the calculation that um the CPI went up six point four four percent. The um diesel went up a little over nine percent for a total adjustment that would have been if we weren't capped at fifteen and a half percent. So because of that cap, we are limited, or um FCC is limited to increasing our rates to five percent. Um, in addition to that service, uh, the contract for service, we've got some non-contract-related program expenses that net to an increase of a little over twelve hundred dollars for the year for fiscal year twenty-four is what we're looking at. So what does that mean for rate impacts to our customers? Um, that means um a four point five percent increase to residential customers because we've got to pass through that five percent contract increase that we're getting from FCC and a five percent increase uh into our commercial customers. What that equates to for the um average residential customer is about eighty-nine cents per month for their refuse fees. Are there any questions on refuse before we move forward?
On the previous slide, it said uh twelve, twelve hundred and eighty-seven dollar decrease, and you said increase.
I'm sorry, that should be a twelve hundred and eighty-seven dollar it decrease, it should be a decrease. Okay, so now we're going to move into the general fund um resources for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Um, our general fund resources fall into eight categories, and around three quarters of the annual adopted revenue budget each year is typically held by our property taxes and our sales tax revenues. Since those are our heavy lifters, we will be going over them in more detail. But to start out with, I want to first touch lightly on the other categories of our revenue sources. Our mixed beverage tax is projected to have a modest increase for fiscal year twenty-four based on the trend we have experienced uh this year, and that's about an eight uh eight percent or an eight thousand dollar increase. Our franchise fees, which are made up of approximately five percent of this year's adopted budget revenue, is projected to decrease by about a hundred and five thousand. This is primarily as a result of customers continuing to cut the cable cord and do most of their streaming um online for their viewing time. License and permits, which make up approximately two percent of this year's adopted budget revenue, is projected to decrease about six percent by eighty-three thousand dollars as a result of decreased alarm permits, contractor permits, and rental registration projections. Our charges for services, which make up about pro- approximately six percent of this year's adopted budget revenue is projected to increase um by ten percent, or about three hundred thousand, primarily due to increased ambulance revenue projections. And of most uh most note is a one point five million increase in transfers in, which is due to a one-time funding transfer from the landmine contingency reserve. which is due to a one-time funding transfer from the landmine contingency reserve that council previously set aside, adopted in the fiscal year '23 budget, which I'll touch more on ahead and Brian touched on earlier in his introduction. So overall, outside of the property tax and the sales tax revenue, the total of these general fund revenue sources is projected to increase by about $1.6 million or 9.2% for fiscal year '24. Of these other revenue sources that I just touched on, projections for fiscal year '24, service fees and permit revenues combined provide a net increase of $230,000. This year, all departments were asked to review all of their fees in the master fee schedule as part of their '24 budget process. They were asked to look at, are those fees still applicable? Are they in line with comparable cities' fees? Do they recover the cost of our services, and should they be increased or decreased? It's not a surprise that since we took a real deep dive into this last year for the fiscal year '23 budget for the first time in a few years, that this year's review only resulted in a couple of proposed fee changes that will add just over $5,000 in revenue to be incorporated into the '24 proposed budget and submitted to council for a master fee schedule update.
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay.
Can you go back to these slides? Why is the rental registration down $37,000?
Manal, can you speak to that, please?
And since the rental registration, it's such a much dangerous rent, and we see that.
And they're supposed to register annually?
Absolutely. If you have a rental property, a single-family rental property is supposed to register. Registration fee.
But apartments also have the.
These are single ones. So for apartments, obviously, we don't stagger rate on that.
Okay. Okay, so now for the bigger rocks. But first, with an interesting historical sales tax chart. So some of you that have been on council for a while and executive team have seen this chart in the past, but some of you are new, so it may be interesting to you to see the history. You can see that sales tax has gone from $524,000 in 1985 up to $3.8 million in 2005, and then it spiked in 2006 to 2011 at $7.5 million with the D.R. Horton Agreement that the city had at that time, which provided a positive impact to the city totaling about $10.6 million from 2006 until 2012, until the state adjusted the sales tax rebate agreement rules, which we lost that stream of sales tax revenue in 2012. And then, once that happened, we dropped back into a historic natural progression uptrend level that we had been seeing prior to that, up to about $5.4 million in 2013, and then continuing up to $7.3 million in 2018. We had a little dip right before the COVID pandemic in 2020, but then we picked back up during the pandemic and then continued to grow to what we are now projecting to reach $9.2 million in sales tax revenue by the end of this fiscal year. In the current year's budget for fiscal year, or, well, in the current year budget for '23, we adopted sales tax revenue at 8.8 million. However, from what we have experienced so far with inflationary factors still in full effect, we believe we've actually reached nine point, we will reach about $9.2 million by the end of this fiscal year. So while sales tax continues to outpace our forecasts for the last couple of years, the annual growth is starting to slow down. With that in mind, we're projecting $9.4 million in sales tax revenue for fiscal year '24. This is a 7% increase over the fiscal year '23 adopted budget and equates to about $192,000 or 2% over what we project to receive in revenue for sales tax in this current fiscal year. So is there any questions on sales tax before we move on to property tax?
I feel like I have a question, but I don't know if this is the right time for it, so I'm going to wait.
All right. Same thing here. Here's another interesting historical tax chart. This chart shows the history of Rowlett property tax values from 1987 to the projected, or for 2023. The blue represents the growth of Rowlett taxable values from $610 million back in 1987 to $3.4 billion in fiscal year 2009, and then up to $7.2 billion in fiscal year 2023. It also shows in green the value exemptions. In fiscal year 2023, we've reached $1.6 billion of exemptions. And for comparison, just in 2022, that was $704 million. So it has gone up exponentially, more than doubled the exemptions that we've experienced over the last couple of years. The chart also shows the Great Recession from 2009 to 2012, as property tax values have a lag, which Brian spoke to earlier, of one to two years for this type of impact. The chart shows the decrease through 2014 and then the recovery starting in 2015. And since the recovery, along with growth from Bayside, Signature Gateway, North Shore, and Downtown Vitality, the city has reduced the property tax rate four times as values have increased. This slide shows our current property tax ranking among other Dallas cities in Dallas County, currently at a tax rate of 0.681 per 100 taxable value. We are ninth, almost out of the top 10. In fiscal year 19, we were sixth from the top, so as other cities have raised their taxes, we have either lowered ours or remained unchanged over the past four years. Before we get into property tax numbers for the upcoming year, I want to touch on this slide. This drives our property tax certified values in some sort. Over the past several years, we've seen taxable values increase anywhere from 10% to 12% annually. And for 2022, values only increased 4%, and this was primarily due to a low residential reappraisal rate from DCAD that year of 14% when we are used to seeing a 45% to 55% reappraisal rate each year, which has given us that 10% to 12% increase in values every year. For this upcoming year, DCAD plans to reappraise 82% of Rowlett properties, and along with the rollover effect of prior-year capped values, which Brian also spoke to earlier, due to the continued strong housing market, our May preliminary DCAD values have increased 15% over last year's certified values. Last year, I believe at this point, it was 24%, so we are seeing a decrease, although we're still higher than what we typically see trends over the last several years. And of course, with that, we expect a historical level of protest as well again this year. So additionally, before I move forward, I want to emphasize that the following tax rate scenarios are based off the May 25th preliminary DCAD and ARCAD reports before the protest deadline. And since these are very preliminary numbers and some of the data is not provided until the July certification, and even some of it not even till October, when we get the certified levy from Dallas County, we have used a lot of estimates and assumptions based on our historical trends. That's that's what we can do at this point in May. So here's where we're going to get, start to get technical, so put your patient pants on with me. Given the sticker shock of the tax statements we all received from the CADDs over the last couple of years, I thought it would be important to discuss that the market and taxable increase that you see on your tax statement and that our residents see on their tax statement does not necessarily equal the revenue increase to the city each year. First, the estimated market value increased 13%, which is that top line, from $8.8 million to $9.9 million. But then, if you look at the next line, that capped value loss, what that means is, which Brian touched to earlier, is that a homestead property's market value may have increased 30% last year, let's say. But the maximum it can be taxed in one year is 10%. So you've got, that 30% is going to be spread over three years. It's going to be 10 cent. If it went up 30% last year, you're going to be taxed on 10% of that last year, 10% this year, and 10% next year until that catches up. So you can see from that capped value loss that we're starting, we don't have as much, it went down by 2%, so we don't have as much capped value loss as we did last year, but we're still really high up there, which means a lot of properties had over 20% capped value last year because we're holding a lot of that this year as well. So that's what Brian talked to, that next year, we'll probably see the values still stay up because we still have 884 of capped value loss that's probably going to roll over into next year. As we saw a decrease this year, we'll probably see a decrease in it next year as well, as that starts to taper off, and someone's 30% increase last year starts to get smoothed out over the three-year period. Second, there are exemptions. Estimated exemptions increased 8% from $665 million to $720 million. These are things like the homestead exemption, the over-65 exemption, disabled agriculture land, or the types of items that you see in these exemption lines here. These exemptions further reduce the market value before the city can apply our tax rate. You can see in the table that the combined DCAD and ARCAD preliminary market value increased 13% after applying the capped value loss and exemptions. The estimated certified value that the city applies taxes on lands at an increase of 15%. The city budgets tax revenue, yes?
I'm sorry. Could you maybe briefly explain the exemptions one more time? Because I think it's important for the public to understand what these actually are and list them out.
Okay, I don't have all of them, but I can tell you the main ones are the homestead exemption, the over-65. Once a resident hits the age of 65, used to, they could apply for an exemption. Now, with the new legislature that just passed, it automatically gets applied, and a resident does not have to apply for it anymore. And that gives an exemption on top of the homestead exemption against the taxable value of their property.
And how much is that?
I want to say it's $30,000, $35,000, 30, 35.
I think $5,000. So when they hit 65, then it automatically changes to $30,000. So it's an additional $25,000 reduction, and they're certified now.
And so I just think it's important for the public to understand that this is a value that they have from the city of Rowlett. That this is only the city of Rowlett, right?
No, I think, you know, the over-65 is statewide. It's the freeze. The freeze is, very few cities in Dallas County actually offer the senior freeze, and we'll get into that towards the end of the calculation.
According to jurisdiction, we're at $30,000. TISD is at $10,000. There's an equalization exemption of $100,000, college $100,000, hospital $100,000. So we're at $30,000. We're offering a pretty good exemption for not counting the freeze.
And, you know, Brian's a good point. There are some cities that do have a higher exemption for over-65, but they don't have the freeze. So that freeze also provides benefit. If that locks you in, namely, turn 65, then you will never pay more, higher property taxes.
That's a lot of money. A lot of money.
Talk about that, so everybody understands where's some of this value.
Okay. Yeah, you're welcome.
Only the exemption is included in this less exemptions line, right?
Correct. Yes. The freeze is down further. I'll get to that further down the calculation.
Well, we also still have the legislature trying to hammer out the tax relief, property tax relief.
They were trying to raise that over-65.
So Rowlett budgets property tax revenue at 98.5% collection. We give a little bit of leeway for delinquencies and non-payment. So it budgeted 98.5% collection rate, and we also participate in TIFs. So once those are factored in, budgeted property tax revenues to cover city operations would be the $40 million that's shown in there in the bold towards the bottom, using the estimated voter approval rate. But because Rowlett also offers a homestead senior freeze, which freezes the dollar amount of city property tax in the year in which the homeowner turns 65, the difference from that person's taxable bill this year versus what that person paid in the year they were awarded the freeze is deducted from the amount that they have to pay this year, and thus, that is lost revenue for the city. So at the age that someone, a resident, turns 65, whatever their city portion of their bill is that year, they will never pay more than that, regardless of if rates go up or regardless if value goes up. Now, if value goes down or rates go down, they can pay less and then increment back up, but that is their ceiling, the dollar amount that they will pay as long as they own, continue to own that property. And again, that's lost revenue to the city because it goes back to what the freeze of their tax bill was the year they turned 65. That is the number that we do not get from Dallas County until October, so that is a wild card every year because the appraisal districts do not calculate that. It's actually Dallas County. And they have to wait until all the certified values are set, until all of the districts set their tax rates, and then they go back and calculate what the impact is going to be to the city. So that's always a wild card, even after we adopt the budget. We don't even, we adopt the budget in August or September, depending on what schedule we're on, and we don't even know that number until October. So well into that after we've started the budget. And you can see, it's a large number. So we do the best we can to estimate what that's going to be each year based on growth. Okay, so based on the preliminary numbers, that tax freeze is expected to increase by $329,000 or 16% from the certification of last year's tax levy in October. And once this loss due to ceilings is factored in, the city's revenue is only increasing by 10%. Again, not exactly the increased market or taxable value percentage that you see on the tax statements. Okay. So today, I'm going to present to you five scenarios, and we'd like to come away with an idea of the direction that council would like us to focus on for our budget model to fund departmental needs and council goals for the proposed budget. Again, all of the scenarios are based on the May preliminary evaluations from the CADDs, and they're adjusted with our assumptions and contingencies based on historical protest and adjustments. So there are two tax rates that the state tax worksheet computes, and that is the no-new revenue rate, which is shown in Block R, Option A, and the voter approval rate, which is shown in Option E, which includes all of our 1.8% unused increment. And what the unused increment is, is each year, when you adopt a tax rate that is below the voter, the base voter approval rate, that difference that you saved the voters, you get to bank it for three years. After it's been in the bank for three years, it falls off and you lose it. It's gone forever. So it's basically a three-year addition of those savings that you've provided to your residents. However, council has multiple, even though there's two tax rates that the state worksheet computes, council has multiple options on setting a tax rate to fund operations and priorities without triggering an automatic election each year. So Option A shows the no-new revenue rate, which would decrease general fund revenue by $323,000 and reduce the tax rate by four pennies. Option B.
Before you do that, the INS rate, does that already include the proposed bond sales?
Yes, it does.
So I just want to make sure everybody knew that was clear. We presented to council the other night, the first amount of bonds we would want to sell this summer, obviously not the over-60 million, but just a portion, and so she's already got that plugged in. So what we're really talking about in these options is the O and N portion. So what we're really talking about in these options is the O and N portion, or they call M and O portion, which affects the general fund. Okay, my fault.
And that INS rate, it's not going to be exact when we get the final numbers in, and that's because right now we're basing it on a preliminary debt schedule. We haven't actually gone to pricing for that debt, so that's based on a preliminary debt schedule from our financial advisors.
Remind me, that was how many cents of the twenty-four portion?
Yeah, it was about a penny. Okay, then Option B is the base voter approval rate without any of the unused increment, which would increase the revenue, just increase just the revenue by three million dollars and increase the tax rate by about a third of a penny. Option C is the base voter approval rate with any portion of the unused increment. So for this example, I used, if you used half of the about one point eight penny of the unused increment, then revenues would increase by about three point seven million and increase the tax rate by about one point two pennies. Option D, this is what we initially have modeled our budget using, and that's using the voter approval rate plus the amount of the unused increment that's going to expire if you don't use it in fiscal year twenty-four. And that is about one point five pennies. So if you don't use the one point five penny of the unused increment, it will no longer be available for future years. If that option was chosen, that it would increase the general fund property tax revenue by four million dollars and increase the tax rate by one point eight pennies. And then finally, the full voter approval rate, which includes all of the one point eight cent unused increment, would increase the revenue by four point four million and increase the tax rate by about two point two pennies. So we will, on the next screen, I'll apply these scenarios into our general fund model. But before I move on, are there any questions on these scenarios or options?
So you're asking for some kind of consensus on the direction for twenty-twenty-four budget? And you said that Option D is what has been put into the budget planning scenario.
In our current models that we're running, that's what we put in there.
That would include a million-dollar surplus after obligations and the adjustment to salaries has been made.
About one point five million, one point four to five.
The million dollars matter was this year.
Yes.
So we're talking about next year. So we still above raises have about one point five.
So that's after the compensation study proposed by H.R. has been put in, obligations have been met, and this is just, this is on top of that, available.
Yes, that's about one point seven.
And that's Option D, okay.
Yes.
Counsel, foul.
Next slide, we'll show that.
Okay, we'll go there.
Let's just make sure there isn't another question on this.
We'll do the next slide.
Just to counsel, we had this conversation, we've been on a preliminary basis, it was one month or two ago, and because we were trying to get some idea as to whether or not there would be a possibility of a November election. At that point, council said that there would be no interest in doing that, and therefore we would revert to that extended budget season schedule, which means you don't have to adopt the budget until September. But you still are going to get the budget earlier this year in July.
July eleventh.
July eleventh.
So this slide puts those values of each scenario in perspective to the bottom-line projected outcome of the general fund capacity for departmental needs and council priorities. The fiscal year twenty-four proposed budget model assumes a baseline of expenses, which we define as the fiscal year twenty-three adopted budget rolling over, plus ongoing adopted amendments from fiscal year twenty-three, which we haven't had any yet, less one-time fiscal year twenty-three supplements, we back those out, plus twenty-four contract and otherwise scheduled increases, as well as council's employee compensation strategy that was implemented last year. This fiscal year twenty-four budget model expense amount is presented on the expense line of all scenarios, the same, A through E, as the sixty-two million, five eighty-nine, nine fifty-three. So that's building in our baseline budget from last year, taking out last year's one-time supplemental, adding in the contract increases that we will have in fiscal year twenty-four, and the raises that was part of the budget strategy last year, and moving forward with that this year. The model assumes the same revenue increases across all scenarios, such as the anticipated sales tax and mixed beverage tax increases, the license and permits increase, and all other revenue source increases and decreases that were explained earlier, I believe in Slide Two. The only difference between the revenue line of all of the scenarios, A through E, is the estimated property tax outcome for each scenario tax rate shown in the previous slide. So for example, looking at Scenario A, if the preference of council is to adopt the estimated no-new revenue rate, which would reduce the current tax rate by four cents, you can see up there at the top underneath the letter A, what the reduction or the increase would be to the tax rate. There would be a budget shortfall in which two point eight million in cuts to the baseline expense budget would need to be made. As shown in the green font, this scenario would result in an estimated thirty-five-dollar reduction per year to the average resident. On the other end, looking at Scenario E, if the preference is to adopt the full voter approval rate, which includes all one point eight pennies of the unused increment, the projected amount available for departmental needs and council priorities would be one point nine million, this scenario would result in an estimated one hundred and fifty-two dollar per year increase to the average resident. Again, keep in mind that this is based on the preliminary appraisal values, and it will change, but this gets us in the ballpark to, for council to give us some type of direction on which scenario you would like us to base our proposed budget on.
Two comments really quick. Let's say, just even look at the maximum, which is Option or Scenario E, that's forty-one cents a day. So for the average homeowner, so just put that in perspective. The second thing I'll point out with it is that out of the one hundred and fifty-two, a penny of that is from the bond election. So out of the one hundred and fifty-two, not all of that is O and N operations. Some of that is due to the bond election.
So we've kind of backed ourselves into a corner here, given the start of this morning, the landmine planning. It looks like we have no choice but to have to increase the rate. If we're trying to balance a budget for the next three years, and even then, that's not enough.
And I do have a slide coming on that as well.
Okay. No option here is great. Not ideal. Especially given that we just increased, well, we just had the voters go out and approve a pretty significant rate increase based on the passage of the bonds. So to go back and now we're increasing the rate in the budget, man, it just got a lot of heartburn over that. But again, we're kind of backed into a corner here. So I think it's, you know, from what I'm seeing here, Option C or D tends to be unfortunately the most reasonable from what I can see. Counsel, I'd like to hear your thoughts.
I was thinking along the same line. You know, I would love to just say, okay, let's not have any kind of impact and go with A, but that's not practical given what we know now. I don't want to go all the way to the end of one hundred and fifty-two, given the additional tax burden that we've levied on them for the bonds. But whatever we choose, I just hope we, as a council, will look at the entire budget and kind of take an austere approach to it, you know? If we're going to increase taxes, again, back to my earlier comment, we really have to be very judicious in looking at every need and judging it based on what do we, what do we lose if we don't do it, what do we gain if we do it? But the wants, I think, are off the board.
Yeah.
So I would tend, like you, Mayor, I could go with C or D. Obviously, the lower the better, but we've just got to be as, as good as we can, you know, in trying to close that gap. And again, that's not going to close the gap, so.
I have to agree with Councilman Britton that we need to be austere in this approach here because we've got to plan for potential for the delays in Sapphire Bay and not be committing expenses that we can't afford. I did have a question. The cost impact per average residence, based on standard two fifty?
No, it's based on the average, I believe it's up to three, I'd have to pull up this spreadsheet, but I want to say it's three oh two right now. It was based on the most recent, last year's certified levy.
And I'm jumping way ahead here. So in the kind of lower-left portion of this screen, you've got a calculation, it looks like, which is showing the increase from the adopted twenty-three to the twenty-twenty-four baseline budget, is that right?
Yes.
It's got an assumption in there of four mil, one sixty-eight on net personnel changes. Is that an assumption of increases in the twenty-twenty-four budget, or is that carryover from what we did in twenty-twenty-three?
It's a combination of any reorgs or promotions that were performed during twenty-twenty-three. It also includes bringing on the nine Safer firefighters from the twenty-nineteen Safer grant. It includes a portion of the nine Safer firefighters from the twenty-twenty Safer grant that the grant is not going to cover, their pay in excess of the grant limitations for the year. And it also includes the pay plan strategy implemented last year of reaching median plus four percent for public safety and median plus one percent for open range.
That does include increases in the twenty-four.
It does.
And have we hired all of the Safer firefighters at this point?
Counsel, any other questions?
Well, I agree with Mike too. This is a really bad position to be in. This is the worst part of being on the council, I think. Trying to balance what we know are some important needs, not being able to give those wants that we would like to see our departments get, and being responsible to the citizens for keeping the taxes as low as we possibly can. I mean, you know me, I don't want to increase the taxes at all. But like you said, Mayor, we don't really have a choice this year. I mean, we're looking at a negative two point seven million there if we went with a no-new revenue rate, and that just won't work. I would be inclined to support C, think that's a good middle ground balance.
As much of a middle ground as that really is. It's tough.
It is.
This is hard without knowing what our new GAAP analysis.
Exactly.
Right.
I like your idea of going to the one times as much as we can, but we've got to be prepared to carry ourselves for a couple of years if necessary, because we can't do a budget deficit and eat into reserves on a planned basis, I think. I've said before, I've always liked the approach of being conservative in the revenue estimates, trying to be austere in our cost estimates, and then, you know, having a happy surprise in the spring when we get more revenue and don't have as much expense. That's a much better approach than the other way around. So I'm inclined to say I could probably go with either the C or the D. I hate to lose the opportunity, but five hundred thousand dollars spread across seventy thousand residents.
Wendy, help me understand the difference in the INS rate from twenty-three to twenty-four on the previous slide, or two slides previous. That one.
Okay.
Fifteen and a half cents versus the seventeen and tenth.
There, this was a complicated conversation I really wasn't wanting to get into today, but I'll try to explain it the best I can. There is a new certified number that Dallas County provides to, or all counties, provide to their taxing jurisdictions of what is considered excess revenue collections. In the past, what we have been able to report was unencumbered fund balance, which basically we provided the number that was sitting in our debt service fund that was excess collected that could be applied towards future debt payments. The legislature has changed that to now we don't get to report it ourself, Dallas County has to calculate it and report it to us and certify it and provide us and tell us what goes in that line. The downfall, where we're having some disconnect on that, and I've gone to two different seminars in the past couple of months. One was put together by GFOAT, which had a speaker from, he was the tax assessor collector from Williamson County, and he's also on the board of the tax rate worksheet for the state. And he made the comment there, make sure that your county assessor is reducing from that number or is taking into consideration if you have senior frees and if you have TIFs. Well, we have both. So the number that we got hit with last year was one point six million dollars, and we to report in that line, where we would have only reported about nine hundred thousand. We, and it was days before this had to be certified, tax rate adopted, sent to the counties to get everything posted and done. So there was a lot of question on it back and forth with Dallas County, and they said, we calculate this, it's part of the legislature, this is the number you have to use. Well, this year went to that GFOAT, and they said, make sure they're taking into consideration frees and TIFs if you have any. So was on my list to bring up and look into. About three weeks later, Dallas County held for the first time a tax rate worksheet seminar. So my team and I went to that one as well. Dallas County had Linebarger do the presentation, their tax attorney, and one of the slides says, we now have to present to you this excess debt collections, and this is the line that you have to use, Dallas County certifies it, you have to report it. And I, and they said, and we know that some known issues are the freeze, the senior freeze and the TIFs. So I went up to speak to Mr. Ames and the Linebarger presenter afterwards and said, how do we, do you subtract that from the number you report to us? And they said, no, by law, we can't. And I said, well, I just went to GFOAT and was told by a different county assessor that you should be subtracting that out. So this is the conservative approach, using what we think Dallas County is going to certify and give to us, which does not take into account the senior frees, backing out the senior frees and the TIF. Because the way Dallas County is reporting it to us is they see a tax bill come in to their office, they automatically say debt service portion goes into debt service fund, and your M and O goes into your M and O fund. That's not the way the city does that when you have a TIF. When your TIF money comes in, fifty percent off the top goes to the TIF. Only the fifty percent that the city gets to keep gets split between debt service and INS. So they're showing that we have a lot more in excess reserves than we really do because they're counting that the fifty percent TIF portion is going in there. So at this point, our new treasury and debt manager, thank you all for approving that position last year, he is working on that right now, and he's actually reached out to Bill Langley, who is a property tax specialist with TML, to find out what is the answer and what can we do to, why is there a discrepancy with what Williamson County and what Dallas County, how they're calculating it, and what can you do to help us get the right calculation? What is the right calculation? So that's why it's got an increase here because it's going to account for extra excess debt collections. So that's why it's got an increase here because it's going to account for extra excess debt collections.
So, I mean, that's, you're talking 1.6 cents.
So about, about a half a penny more than what we would have anticipated from the actual debt issuance.
Got it. So when we're looking at, at rate changes, part of that is kind of an unknown.
Exactly.
Because we don't have the full story, the full picture.
And that one point, and that's using the 1.6 million that Dallas County gave us last year for excess debt collections, that could go up. We don't get that until, um, after the certified values.
So would you consider that a, a conservative estimate, what, what you've budgeted?
I would consider it a, a midline conservative. I think from the approach of are we going to go Williamson County or are we going to get to, are we going to have to go Dallas County? It's conservative. Based on what Dallas, if we go Dallas County and we've received higher excess collections, it could be a little bit worse.
Well, I think what you're saying is this is based on what you think Dallas County would do, assuming that.
Last year's number.
Last year.
Exactly. Yeah.
But if it's worse than that, then it could still go up.
Yeah.
But if the 1.6 doesn't change, it shouldn't be higher than that.
Right.
Because it's already based on Dallas County, what they're telling us.
Yes.
And if it were to go up, then the rate increases that we're looking at here and the impact per resident could even be higher than what is in the green line on the next slide.
Could this calculation get any more convoluted?
Well, I mean, that's, that's part of my issue when I look at this and I try to make a decision is there are a lot of pieces of the puzzle that are missing.
Yeah.
You know, a, a critical question that I would have is what are our, what are our needs in PD? I mean, I've, I've seen chief's presentation, but are we looking at four officers, eight officers? What's the timeline on that? I know last year we kind of talked about that was.
So, so Jeff, may, maybe to your point, uh, maybe we do the presentations and.
I think that has to happen before we lock in a rate here because, I mean, my natural inclination is to say, let's just do the voter approval rate. We're going to tighten our belt because that's what we're being asked to do by residents. Everybody is tightening the belt, right? We're kind of in that pre-recession feeling of stuff's about to get maybe hinky. So we need to tighten our belt, but then a bombshell was dropped on this, on us this morning that we've got.
We're going to run into deficits.
We've got potential funding issues for the next couple of years or four, up to four years. Right. I mean, we, we either need a bigger belt or a smaller belt. I'm not sure which, but it's, it's a little frightening. And, you know, that's just another complexity that's been added to it of, hey, Dallas County in the throes of trying to understand the legislature and what the assess, the assessment appraisal district is supposed to do. Boy, that just introduces a whole nother question about what the rate should be and what the impact will be and how that will be felt.
It makes it very nerve wracking every year, not only for council to make these decisions, but for us as staff to present these numbers to you, knowing that they, they are pretty, pretty shaky.
So we, we are, we're running pretty late. So, and we still got some more slides here. So let's, uh, let's go.
All right. So the executive team met on May 22nd and 23rd to discuss and prioritize all of our, uh, requests. And as such, the list is sorted by executive team ranking of the top 2 million in needs that we determined over those two days. Uh, knowing your priorities as council, as well as using the provided comprehensive list of requests that was emailed to you last Thursday and it'd be presented to you over today and tomorrow. This slide, um, will assist you in deciding your tax rate decision points and funding priorities over the next fiscal year. And we will revisit this. We're not wanting a decision today on where you're wanting to go. But this was just kind of an overview so that after you hear the department presentations and what you're looking at, when we wrap up tomorrow, we'll go back to this slide and see, um, what you would like us to move forward with. But as you can see, even using the full voter approval rate, including all of the 1.8 pennies of the unused increment rate, would not provide enough funding to cover all of the requests from departments, boards and commissions and other council priorities. So this is where all of your hard decisions, uh, begin.
Wendy, on that, on that list, and I know we'll get to the list later. What was the methodology to the ranking in, in the first calling?
So we all met in here over two days and all of the departments were asked to put on the whiteboard their top two priorities. And then from that point, everyone, executive team went and put a mark next to what they thought was the most important. So, um.
So we have multiple threes, that was the tie essentially. Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
And that was after every department gave their, the same budget presentation essentially they're going to give to you. So the department heads were able to hear that and then they couldn't make their pitch. What they needed most. And then this was the ranking we came up with.
Okay. So before I close the presentation, I want to touch again on the landmine planning that Brian spoke to previously. Here we have a recap on the 87th legislature's Senate Bill Two. It created a structure that imposes a three and a half percent cap for property tax revenue growth. For cities that experiencing high growth such as Rowlett, actual revenue may exceed the cap, which we've seen due to new priorities, uh, new properties coming online. But they likely will not be sufficient in the interim to cover the infrastructure or public safety demands of large developments while they occur, which we're also seeing, such as Sapphire Bay, which requires funding the operations of a new fire station before the revenues from those development, um, mature. As Brian mentioned, uh, in his opening, due to Senate Bill Two and the Sapphire Bay development delay, council set aside 2.7 million for a landmine contingency reserve in last year's budget process to bridge a 1.9 million gap in this fiscal year 24 budget and a $900,000 gap in the fiscal year 25 budget, based on the then personnel rates and fire apparatus projections. We have built in, as, um, the, as spoke about earlier, the fiscal year 24 land mining list of additions and the associated transfer from the contingency reserves totaling 1.6 million into the fiscal year 24 general fund base expenses and revenues that were shown earlier. With the exception of the four new police officers and the Sapphire Bay ladder truck, since it will not be ready until fiscal year 25. This drawdown will leave a contingency reserve balance of 1.1 million for fiscal year 25. We had, uh, had we included the four additional police officers and the ladder truck, which you could see over to the right in the red. We would have need to draw down 2.5 million of the 2.7 million reserves, leaving us 616,000 behind the curve for fiscal year 24 due to raises, inflation and fire equipment needs. And fiscal year 25 is only going to get tougher as there is another wave of nine safer firefighter grants coming online and additional fire equipment and police staffing considerations. So keep in mind, uh, keep this in mind for your decisions for tomorrow. And finally, before I close, as I mentioned earlier, we have built the 24 landmine planning list of additions and the associated transfer from the contingency reserves totaling 1.6 million into the 24 general fund base expenses of 62 million and revenues shown, um, earlier. As you can see, the tax rate impacts are the same as shown before. The difference in this chart than what you previously saw is that it breaks out the impact of the Sapphire Bay delay. The 1.6 million costs we need to incur every year going forward is that 1.6 million dollars shown underneath expenses. So when you add those two together, that's 60 plus the one. It comes to that 62 that we talked about earlier for total expenses that we're rolling into the budget. The problem is that the revenue source, which is above it as the one-time contingency reserve transfer in is a one-time revenue source. It won't be there again next year to cover the 1.6 million we're adding this year. So in essence, council needs to consider the 1.6 million rolling expense as a fund, uh, as a funding priority in tomorrow's decisions by moving it into the contingency reserves for fiscal year 25 and the budget considerations, either by preserving some of this year's surplus or maybe taking a portion of that 1.6 and continuing to roll it for out of what your 1.7 or 1. Actually, you couldn't choose the 1.2 if you were going to do that. But if you were to choose the 1.7, you know, maybe take a part of that 1.6 and roll uh, one, part of that 1.7 and roll it into the contingency to help cover future years. But that was just an option. I wanted to be able to clearly show you that that, um, by adding those contingency reserve expenses in, it's a one-time funding source that's being added to the revenue source as well. And that is the conclusion.
Okay. All right.
Sorry.
We're going to go through, uh, the rest of it. Um, and then when we come back at the end of the day, after we've listened to department presentations, I think we come back to that. I think we come back to that, uh, slide on determining the C or D option.
We do have more departments tomorrow.
Yeah.
I have that slide in the rap.
So we, yeah, so then maybe, yeah, we could probably wait till tomorrow then. So that, that's perfect.
Yeah.
Need time for a five minute break?
Yeah, I was gonna, it's probably not a bad idea. Given the information that we have received today about landmine planning, the significance of it. And the apparent need that there needs to be a lot more work in terms of understanding the issues. Uh, I think this discussion for the next two days is very preliminary. I think we need to allow staff to go back and get their hands on the data, the new data that they've learned and come up with, um, some other strategies. I think that we need to consider having this, this meeting and a future date to be determined, given the information we have received. This allows staff to go back and have the necessary time to plan and present better information to us. All of this is really just preliminary. Uh, this isn't, we can't make decisions or give any, any consensus because we don't have enough to, to make those decisions. So that is my proposal. I would, uh, ask for support on that to allow staff to go back and have more time, come back with us with better information. Thoughts?
No, my mouth will always open for it, but, um, I, I, I like the concept. I think there are some moving parts here that were not that everyone wasn't aware of when we got going. I like the idea of getting our updated, um, gap planning with a couple of scenarios that we understand when we're talking about not just fiscal year 24, but fiscal year 25, fiscal year 26, what we're looking at potentially down the road, some assumptions around that. The other thing I was thinking about was, and I thought about this before coming in today. We have our, our, our citizens just passed a tax increase on themselves, which is going to play out over the next 24 months to eventually be, I want to say it was eight cents or nine cents per hundred dollar valuation. So I walked in today thinking, you know, if we've got good rosy revenue scenarios, is there a way for us to start looking at some of the things we're doing today that maybe are no longer as high on priority as some of the things that we want to do tomorrow? Not quite like a zero-based budgeting approach, but a little bit of that, but going back and reassessing. Are there things that we're doing that we can stop doing in order to help fund some of the things we want to start doing? If I would add that into the mix, started throwing some numbers around, it's not, it's not pretty, um, I know. In my working life, it was not uncommon for senior managers to come around and say, well, if you had to work with 5% less, what would you give up? That's a really big number. Okay. Just in our, just looking at our O and M, that's like four or five million dollars. So that goes the opposite way, but not a bad scenario to look at and say, well, if you had to drop two and a half percent out of your budget, what were, what would be those things? And then we can look at those things in comparison to the things that we want to start doing and how that affects our citizens and how that affects our tax rates. I also made a note here, I really would like to look at, like you do in the gap analysis here, um, we're looking out into 25 and 26 and 27. Like to think about that in the context of, um, our other department expenses as well. I mean, we, every year we kind of say, oh, well, we, we, we've planned for these salary increases. We planned, and then we kind of start with everything baked in without seeing what that does to us two, two years and three years down the road. It's a pretty common practice to have in your budget cycle. You know, what did we adopt? Where are we now against what we adopted last time? What are we planning for in the budget? And what is our forecast for the next couple of years, just to where that takes us? But sometimes we make these decisions and say, okay, well, in 24, we're going to go do this thing. And we're seeing it now. We're seeing in the gap analysis, we said, okay, great. We got safer money. We're hiring eight firefighters. Well, let's see what that does to us two years down the road and not just for the firefighters, for the safer brands, but in general for things. If we hire somebody that carries out, that tip gives us a new baseline in 25 and 26. So moving, I was looking at this document, this last year's budget, adopted budget. And it stops in fiscal year 23 adopted budget, doesn't have an estimate for where, what we did when we adopted this, what that might do to us in 24 or in 25. I think that needs to be part of the conversation this year, especially in light of what we're seeing with the development projects we have. But it's an ongoing basis just to know, you know, kind of what direction to go. I mean, I don't always follow my Google Maps. Sometimes I pick the alternate route, but Google Maps always gives me all the directions all the way to the end, right? Sorry, I talked too much.
No, there's value to that. Thank you. Counsel, are we?
Yeah, Mayor, I, I would agree. Um, you know, variables are part of the equation. It's, it's going to be part of the equation, but we have too many variables and the span of what those variables could equal is too wide. So we, we can't hone in on what decisions or what consensus we need to arrive at today when it comes to what that rate might be with so many pieces of the puzzle unaccounted for with where we are, in, in my opinion.
I think Brian makes some very good points that should be taken into consideration for the, the meeting when we have this meeting, but I agree with you that, um, it, it's too preliminary at this point. And I would like for our new city manager to be able to participate in this discussion and having it started a week ago. You know, it's, it's difficult for him to, to do that. And some of this information is new to him too. So.
You know, insignificant. Yes.
And, and counsel had previously agreed that we're on that kind of extended budget timeline anyway. So we have the flexibility to leverage some of that time to be, get better prepared, make more informed decisions and not rush this process. And I, I appreciate that staff is taking the time to put together their presentations and they're very valuable. Having those is very valuable.
And now we have time to study them.
Yeah, we have time to study the prioritization lists, the information you shared today, Wendy, in your email. That's incredibly valuable information that we can look over. And then when we come back and we get refreshed presentations with other pieces of those variables filled in or some of the variables kind of narrowed down a little bit.
Or better definitive strategies that we can choose from going forward.
An alternate date, uh, still meet this date deadline that we've been providing, the proposed budget would be August 15, 15. So that gives another month.
What was the date?
August 15th is. When we meet, when we have so, for like the final day, it's definitely not for.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I agree with the mayor. We, we, there's just absolutely no way we can come to consensus over the, today or tomorrow. Time and, uh, and we, and we probably need to give the department heads sufficient time to go back and methodically go through their budget before we present it. I know we've got time, so I'm not sure when you would be proposing.
To be determined. We, uh, we'll let staff go and figure out some dates.
I agree.
Alisa?
Yes.
All right. Michael?
Yes, I agree.
All right. So we're going to conclude today then. And we'll come back to a future date to be determined. And just come back with some better strategies on moving forward in years to come.
Do we need to do anything to officially cancel tomorrow's meeting? Will Laura handle that?
Uh, it's not an official council meeting. Um, so there's no technically protocol for that. But I would suggest that an update be added to the agenda that says this meeting's been canceled, if that's possible.
So cancel tomorrow as well?
Yes.
And today?
And today now.
Cancel lunch? She got to cancel lunch?
Since, did you want to do some stuff?
I'd like the staff to meet, but I don't know if the mayor's, and I don't want it, this is obviously a council discussion, but to the point, uh, the mayor's kind of said that, you know, right now it's preliminary for them to make a determination on any soon. And they'd like to go back and I think we will give these presentations at a later time when we can give them more context with the respect to some of the variable information that we presented to them today. So I think it might be prudent for us as staff to kind of put our heads together here quickly at the conclusion of this meeting. But.
I think that's a good, I think that's a good plan.
Mayor, can I ask one question?
Yes.
Of you, I guess, is, so want to make sure since we're sending staff back that we're clear on what, what it is we're asking them to do. Cause I've heard a couple of different things and some have just kind of been thrown out as comments, but you know, Brian talked about in his, uh, in his past life, you know. know, Brian talked about in his, in his past life, you know, you know, can you give us a two, do all this with a 2.5% decrease? Is that possible? We've talked this morning about, you know, wants versus absolute needs. And so just so, so you're talking to staff that we're real clear on what it is we're asking them to do.
Yeah. What, what we need are some very clear strategies that we can pick from on this scenario A is a situation. This is what we're looking at going into, you know, the coming years. Go ahead, David.
I can say this, allow us to go back and do some additional analysis, right? Whether that's reduction packages or other things, I don't know, we'll present them, we don't really know where we're going to end up. I mean, Brian certainly, and he talked a little bit, gave you a message of, and be careful. It doesn't mean ultimately we're going to, you know, that, that there isn't money to do something. I think Wendy said it earlier, you know, there's a lot of stuff that's still moving. So I don't know that you need to necessarily tell us, go do this, go do this, go do this. I think the message has been clearly conveyed that you need additional information, you'd like to see some additional modeling. There's some of the variables that we have discussed, you'd like to see the impacts of those things a little more clearly. And I think it will just take us a little bit more time to give you that information. And so I, I, I think I understand the message, which is give us a little more context to some of the things that we think you're going to see. Part of that is, and I, and I think the point of why, why we're here is to say, hey, counsel, which direction do you want us to go with responding to? Right now, I think the bigger question is, where do we end up? And then how much room is legitimately left for these requests? And I think it's easier for you to parse out the requests that are written. So I think I clearly understand what it is that you're seeking in terms of information that's going to help you make additional decisions.
And Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to add one other thing too. At the time that we met with counsel a couple of months ago, and we had this conversation about the land, landmine planning, I think at that time in our mind, we were still thinking maybe one year slithich. And when we met with the executive team and we went through this prioritization, I think that was still what we were thinking. But I think what we've been hearing from finance really in the last week or two is that it's not just a slithich, it's also the fact that costs have increased. I, I, I think you have to plan for two years and hope it's only one, but I think you've got a plan for it.
Well, Brian, you made the, you made the remark when you, in your, in your opening remarks today, and you said, any surplus that we find or see, we need to evaluate the landmine planning first. And I think that was what was missed when we looked at the mid-year budget surpluses. May, maybe, maybe there was a conscious decision to say, we don't think that's needed. But it almost seems to me like consideration wasn't even given to the landmine issue at that point. And we just said, what other accomplishments can we show for that with, with that funding? And if we had, if we consciously asked ourselves the question, do we need to set aside any of that funding for landmine planning? And took an honest look at that, I think we might've come to a different conclusion than what we did a, as council priorities coming out of those mid-year budget meetings.
I, I think that's fair. I mean, again, had you, had we known what we know today, I think, I think we probably would have pushed harder and I think you would have made different decisions. Yes.
I, I recall some discussion about having the $2.7 million available to cover the landmines, but we had not thought about the impact of the lack or.
We didn't know the deficits we were going to be coming into.
The pushback and the revenue stream.
Yeah, we did not know that.
And its effect on the landmine planning, let alone the, you know, the cost increases just from.
Yes.
Uh, since, since we're asking the city manager to go back and, and, and work with the department heads and reevaluate the budgets and using some of the words that we used this morning, you know, needs versus wants, more of an austere approach, should we also convey that to our boards and commissions as they're also planning, you know, their, their budget needs, do we want to convey to them to go back and reevaluate that as well?
Well, I.
Maybe they, maybe they stay flat or maybe they reevaluate what they're asking for. Uh, to, to make it equitable across anyone.
So, so as council liaisons, I think that's our individual responsibilities to communicate that to our boards and commissions. And the executive team being staff liaisons should also communicate that to the chairs in their conversations. Most of the commissions only meet once a month. They may not be able to meet again before we have these conversations. You know, Arts and Humanities is one that asked for an increase, for example. That's my commission. We have a meeting tonight. This is going to be conveyed to them, I promise you, based on these discussions that we're having because.
That's fair. Just so that they've got the same kind of.
Totally understand.
And I, and I think that, that's not as critical of an issue because even, even with the increased requests, at the end of the day, when we get the, the variables that we're looking for here and more honed down more on the issue at hand and how to address it, I think we will then know what to really allocate to these different entities and what not to allocate.
And most of the boards and commissions, the amount is really pretty small.
It is, but we're also talking about adding a tax burden onto our citizen.
I agree.
We're asking the department heads to go back and look. I'm just looking at across.
Sure. I'm not disagreeing with you.
Keep things as flat as possible.
I think that's, once we get the additional information, we're going to have that answer.
Yeah, I would say let's not pick, pick, pick the body apart just yet. But that's really kind of my caution, let us go back and just do more analysis and then we'll come back with these respective scenarios if need be, or recommendations or other. I think right now it's too, too soon to just dismantle everything just yet. And I don't, I don't think that was Brian's message. I think it was a message of caution, which I think has been heard and which we've taken to heart as well. But, but I don't want to also, you know, the sky isn't quite falling yet and we don't have to dismantle everything, but I do think we have to do some additional analysis to determine where we are today and where we'll be in the next couple of years.
Yep.
And I, I know the, like that, but I agree with Mike's side. We need to, so I think we need to evaluate.
Maybe it's more of the message.
Well, it's, we're, we're getting ahead of ourselves, y'all. I mean, that's.
We're, we're looking for, as Brian likes to say, we're looking for the big rocks to deal with what's coming. Sometimes you need to put together some little rocks to go with the big rocks to, to cap it all off. So I think everything is on the tape.
And that's, and that's, again, preliminary, which is the reason why we're, we're going to try to delay this meeting, is to let, let them get their heads together, come back, and then let's make that decision at that point.
I don't have a problem. I just wanted to get that.
Yeah, I don't think we need to build five different budgets for the five different options that Wendy gave us, but I think if we could hit some high notes of each one of those of what the impact might be, that, that's kind of, that, I think that's what you've expressed, and I think that's what we're expressing.
Yep. Okay. Counsel, anything else?
When are we going to discuss that mid-year, the application for the mid-year?
I, I, this is part of that discussion. They're going to have to go back as a team and look at this, this strategies going forward. That's going to be one of them that they're going to have to consider is, you know, given council has been amenable to saying, let's go back and try to get as much back as we